This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. The Eau Claire City Council Meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council Meeting.
Call this meeting to order? I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean?
And we have quorum. Thank you, everyone, for coming down this evening to City Council chambers. Want to welcome everyone and also thank Valley Media Works. I believe today they're not live streaming, but there's going to be a recorded version of this meeting that will be up on their website. For folks that are listening at home on the radio, it's WRFPLP 101.9 FM. And the YouTube channel for Valley Media Works will also carry this proceeding, beginning tomorrow afternoon. Want to, right away, move to our first order of business, which is our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to remove for separate consideration this evening, or any questions that council may have regarding any items on the consent agenda? Any questions? Anyone want to remove anything separate? Seeing no such desire at this time, then on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, the consent agenda has been moved. Is there discussion on these items? Seeing no desire for discussion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been passed. This evening, we're going to have a proclamation. If I could invite Mr. Escondo from the Big Brothers and Big Sisters forward to the podium this evening. We greatly appreciate it. So this evening, I'm just going to read from this proclamation regarding Big Brothers and Big Sisters Thank You Mentor Day. Whereas every child deserves to achieve success in life, and whereas mentoring through Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Northwestern Wisconsin provides children facing adversity a strong and enduring professionally-supported relationship that can change their lives for the better. And whereas children with mentors set higher goals for themselves, and whereas children with mentors are less likely to use drugs and alcohol, and whereas children with a mentor are much more likely to reach higher levels of educational attainment. And whereas each year, hundreds of caring adults volunteer their time across the Chippewa Valley to better the lives of our children in communities as mentors. And whereas in 2019, we are marking the 17th year celebrating January as National Mentoring Month. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Worthman, Vice President, the Eau Claire City Council, and on behalf of our entire city council and the citizens of our great city, do hereby proclaim January 31, 2019, as Big Brothers and Big Sisters Thank You Mentor Day, and urge everyone in Eau Claire to thank their mentors and those who made a positive impact on them while growing up. Thank you. Get this to you. It's already signed. Let me say a few words.
Perfect. Just a few words. This is one of my favorite days, all the time. For 17 years, our agency has been coming here, collaborating with the city, with the city council, and for what? This is not just a proclamation. Every year, this is a reinforcement of the fact that every child who faces adversity should have an opportunity to do better, to be better, through mentoring. I would say that most of us sitting in this room today could probably think of that one person, maybe two, maybe three. That person that was there for you, the person that dusted you off and said, "Hey, get up, try again, it'll be all right." And that's led to who we are today. But for tons of kids throughout Northwestern Wisconsin, they don't have that. And that's not okay. And that's why Big Brothers, Big Sisters exists, to give every child who wants that opportunity to be better, to do better, can have that opportunity. But we surely can't do that by ourselves. It is through the collaboration with the cities that we serve, this esteemed city council, that allows us to do the work that we do. We are surely not saviors to these children, we are allies. We are surely not the creators of their potential, but we are hell-bent on defending it. And we cannot do that with the continued support that we regularly get from the City of Eau Claire and this wonderful city council. So on behalf of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northwestern Wisconsin, but more importantly, our children, thank you so much for your support and for the proclamation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Return to our business agenda this evening, and bring up item number 16, which is a resolution approving the projects and levying special assessments for improvements on the following alleys. I won't list them this evening, but they're there in your packet, it's a long list. But what I do want to ask is, do council members, first of all, have any follow-up questions they would like to ask about any of the alley improvements here on this list in item 16? And then the second thing, and we can come to it when we do, is if council members would like to remove any of them for separate consideration. Otherwise, my preference is that we would vote on all of them at the same time. So let's take it one at a time. Are there any questions, follow-up of city staff regarding the alley improvements on item number 16? Councilmember Beaton?
I have a question for Mr. Solberg. The alley in the third ward, I'm forgetting which road it is now, and I'm trying to find it.
Gilbert?
Ruston-Gilbert?
East of Gilbert?
Yeah.
Very east of Rust Street-Gilbert to 140 feet north.
So I understand that this was the only alley improvement that came to us, kind of outside of our normal alley improvement schedule, came to us by way of petition?
For the 2019. We have had some in the past, and we have some already for next year, but with this listing, this is the only one.
Okay. I was wondering where this alley was in the lineup of our alley improvement schedule, like, long-term? When we, you know, if this had not come to us via petition, when it would have come to us?
We don't have, like, the list for '20 and '21 set to go right now. We usually drive them in the spring when they're in their worst condition, and make the list this spring for what we'll bring forward next year. But this being an unimproved alley that's being used in the third ward, with the number of alleys that we've improved already, we don't have a lot of years left until we're through what we wanted to accomplish. So this would have been brought forward through the normal selection, probably next year or the year after, I would say. So it would have been within the next couple of years, for sure. It would have been brought before you for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions regarding the alleys? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. And I have a question, I guess it's a general question, although I think it piqued my interest for the alley east of Rust Street and on Gilbert. And that's, what recourse do citizens have if their alley is assessed, or their property is assessed and alley is improved at their residency, and they don't agree with it? What type of recourse does a citizen have?
When, the main recourse, or the initial recourse, I guess, would be to come to the hearing, like, came last night, and express their feelings for and against projects. That happened last year with alleys, where we had two alleys that had petitions for, but no petitions against. Those residents that were against the alley came to the hearings, and then ultimately the council voted not to approve those. Once the alley is approved by the city council, and for special assessments to be levied, then the alley, unless the council were to take alternate action later before construction starts, the alley would go under construction, they would be special assessed the next year. With our alley program, we do have our alley reimbursement program this year also, that's run through our finance department. For persons experiencing lower incomes typically, if you meet a certain income requirement threshold, you could have CDBG funds pay for your alley assessment. So if you were against an alley and you qualified income-wise, the assessments for it would be, could potentially be covered, and you wouldn't have a financial obligation, but the alley still would be constructed adjacent to your property for that.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. So if somebody doesn't qualify for, kind of, reduced income assistance, is there another, can this go to, like, a Board of Appeals, or is there any other place that a resident could appeal this if they don't agree with this?
The city in very isolated, we do have a Board of Appeals for special assessments. There's a review panel, I'm not familiar with who exactly is on that panel, but it is, my understanding that it's a, it's a much higher threshold, and there are some other considerations with that, such as that when the property is sold at some point, those assessments could be levied at that point, as opposed to the alley improvement program with the reimbursement is a higher threshold, or a lower threshold to be able to meet, more people qualify for that typically. But there is that special assessment review committee, or I'm not sure what the, but there is a process for that as well. But the alley is still done, that's a finance consideration, not a project for that.
I think our city attorney would have something to add to that as well. City Attorney Nick?
Right. Mr. Solberg's correct, there is that type of special assessment deferment board, it's in cases of extreme financial hardship, which may exist, but weren't raised at the hearing last night, so it's simply situations, and we have a few a year where there's an inability to pay per the assessment policy. So the legislative decision on whether to go for with special, or public work projects, street projects, alley projects, is a legislative one, it's before you, that's the determination. So the only other recourse would be a legal one in circuit court. If there was some reason that you were going for it with a project which was simply unlawful, this project's not unlawful, it's just your policy choice of whether to improve it beyond a base course gravel to our typical standard of paved asphalt or concrete.
Thank you. Does that help? Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel, thank you, Mr. Solberg, City Attorney Nick. Further questions on the alley improvements? Councilmember Jean?
Thank you. I wasn't here yesterday, are there any citizens here opposing alleys?
There were two citizens that expressed displeasure with the alley moving forward from this property and this property, and the property owner here expressed...
Which section is on?
These two. So here's Gilbert Avenue, so this property owner owns this side, and then the property owner on the corner here as well. This property owner was spoken in support of it. When the petitions were presented to the city council for consideration, there was one for, one against, late last year. The council ultimately accepted the petition to improve the alley. That was signed by this property owner and this property owner, and the petition against having the alley improved were the two property owners that spoke last night.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So let's see, did the council approve this alley's, when its construction began?
They would begin the summer, probably June timeframe. An alley typically takes about three weeks to construct.
How long?
It takes about three weeks to construct, so they'd start in June or July, and they would be done this summer, this particular alley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and thank you, Mr. Solberg. I was wondering, you know, with regard to this alley again on Gilbert, I guess I was wondering, I know we saw part of the input from other petitioners was to have this correct some alignment of the alley as it's kind of shifted to the west. And I guess I was wondering, from your perspective, what the impact would be to realign this along the right-of-way on the property to the east, what some of the impacts might be, and if there's any concerns about that. And then also, if you could speak to the amount of right-of-way that we have there, and how many feet of that will actually be paved? Because I think, as I recall, it was a 16-foot right-of-way, and then a 14-feet of pavement.
So shifting the alley to the east within the corridor, the alley would remain wholly within the right-of-way, so we wouldn't be shifting it or proposing to have the alley constructed outside of the right-of-way to the east. The property owner here last night expressed that he was aware of his planter beds that are in the right-of-way, had plans to remove those last fall, and time was of a constraint. There is a fence that, it's my understanding, is on the property owner's side of the right-of-way, so that would be unaffected by this. There are branches, and frequently with our alleys, they do require brushing out. When we do have, a lot of the alleys will have overgrowth, or shrubs, or stuff that go, protrude into the alley. So to make sure that the alley is free and clear for vehicular passage, we do prune those back, or work with property owners to remove those, if they are causing a, kind of, an impairment to traffic. So there are some lilacs that, in the pictures that the property owner brought yesterday, look like they could be pruned back within there. I'm not sure if the root structure is within the right-of-way, or if it's outside of the right-of-way, but it would be cleared out, so the people using the alley wouldn't have their vehicle scratched if they stayed within that pavement. Typically, we propose for our alleys to reconstruct with a foot of right-of-way on each side, if possible, to match in with, typically, it's topsoil and seed, if it's a yard area next to it, and if it's a driveway apron going into a garage, then we would match in with the asphalt, or if they have a concrete apron there. So it's generally 14 feet, but it's kind of varied, as you go through, depending upon if we have to go around a telephone pole, or an apron, or whatnot. So we would be trying to propose so we could match in the area outside of the pavement with the lawns, all within the right-of-way of that.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Weld?
Acting President, I'm not sure if it's to this stage yet. I abstained from the Gilbert Street project last year when we voted on this, and I'll need to abstain from it tonight, so I don't know if we want to pull it off, or I can just abstain from all the alley improvements, whatever you prefer.
Sure, I think it makes sense to remove, to move it separately.
Okay.
Can I consider that a motion to, or actually, Councilmember Emmanuel, and do we have a second to remove this item separately? It'll be Councilmember Beaton, so it's removed separately. Any further questions from Council, Mr. Solberg, or anyone else regarding this alley improvement? Specifically, I guess we're talking about Gilbert, but any of the others either? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you. So we've motioned to take up the Gilbert Ave alley separately for consideration. Are there council members who would like to speak on it, lead us off at this time? Councilmember Strobel?
I just have a procedural question, are you gonna, are we going to offer all the other alleys first, and then Gilbert, or are we gonna offer Gilbert now? How does that?
It doesn't matter a lot, but the other ones are listed first, so I was gonna ask the same question. Just for clarification, which one are you dealing with? Is the mover in second, or what?
Well, since we made the motion to remove it separately, let's just take up the Gilbert Ave one separately, and then we'll do the others. So we're talking about Gilbert Ave now?
And then have we moved it?
I'm not certain. We, yeah, we moved it separately, I believe, on a motion by Councilmember Emmanuel and Beaton, to move it as a separate item. Do I need another motion? I'll ask the city attorney. Do I need another motion besides Councilmembers Emmanuel and Beaton?
It wasn't clear to me at first what you meant when you said those two council members, but as long as those two council members are in favor of moving to approve that one item, I'm happy to take it. The Councilmember Emmanuel moved the approval of the alley east of Rust Street-Gilbert 200 feet north, and it was seconded by Councilmember Beaton.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. Discussion on this particular improvement? Who would like to lead off? Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, I'm going to support it, the Gilbert Ave alley. I do feel for the owner, who'll be a special assessor, and who's not currently really using the alley right now, but this does happen quite a bit with projects, and not all property owners always feel that they'll benefit from the improvements. However, we're not sure a future owner of this property might not decide to add a detached garage or a shed, and at that point in time, they may find this alley access beneficial to them. I don't think we know that. I do think it cleans up the encroachments, and it also restores the correct right-of-way, so I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Further input? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I also will be supporting this. Very difficult when we have people who live in a neighborhood and disagree on really the solution here. And I think there's two compelling aspects for me that compel me to vote in support of this. The first is that I really believe that our decisions that we make as a body have to look at the long-term impact of our community, and while this is one clustering of homes, this can improve the lives of people in the long run, even if not everybody is utilizing them. And the second is that it's all but inevitable that this property would have been specially assessed and had the alley improved here. So unfortunately, I wish it was a transaction where everybody was on board and was behind it, that makes it easy, and that's not what we have here, but I think it has merit for the long view.
Thank you, Councilmember. Further comments on this specific item? Seeing no further desire to speak or make any motion, we will call the roll specifically on the alley east of Rust Street-Gilbert Avenue to 140 feet north.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes. Then move back to the other alleys in item number 16, and on a motion by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Councilmember Gregert, that list, minus the one we just did on Gilbert, has been moved. Is there any discussion on the alley improvements? Seeing no discussion, again, just to clarify, this will be on all of them except for the Gilbert Ave. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes. We'll move then to our next item of business this evening, which is number 17. This is a resolution vacating a portion of alley east of South Barstow Street from Emery Street to 79 feet south of Seaver Street. Plan Commission postponed action on this to February 4, 2019. Therefore, it is recommendation that this item be postponed until after Plan Commission takes action. We heard a little bit about this last evening. I'll, I think, unless there's any questions from council, we'll move it. Can we just do a motion to postpone, or I'm assuming we have to move it, and then we have to vote to postpone? Is that correct?
Your preference, if there is a parliamentary correct way, I'm not grabbing onto it. So I think you can just straight move to postpone before you move to move action on it.
Okay, then, a motion by Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, a motion to postpone this item has been made. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson? Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item has been postponed as well.
We move then to Mill Run. Item number 19 on our agenda this evening is a resolution approving the final plat, so, my apologies, the final replat for Mill Run located east of North Town Hall Road. Mr. Petrie?
Good evening. Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. Before you is a replat, final replat of Mill Run subdivision to create six new lots on the far west side of Eau Claire, off of Christopher Drive and North Town Hall Road. The plat is in front of you on the screen, and then an aerial photograph showing the existing Mill Run subdivision on the far west side. This plat would create six new lots for R2 development, which is single-family or two-family. It is consistent with the components of plan. The next item on your agenda is a development agreement to extend utilities along North Town Hall Road. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of the request. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on this replat? Don't see any. Do you want to, do we need another presentation for item number 20, or probably?
Mr. Jensko would be able to present that item.
Oh, he's going to present it, okay. Wonderful. Well, thank you again for the presentation this evening. Then on a motion by Councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 19, the replat of Mill Run has been moved. Is there any discussion? Any discussion this evening? I don't see any. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to item 20. This resolution authorizes our city manager to enter into a development agreement with investment realtors for street and utility improvements within County Road Double E. Mr. Jensko?
Okay, this is the development agreement for the six new lots that Ryan just referenced. The two lots on the existing street already have mains, water and sewer mains in front, so they're set. The development agreement will extend the water and sewer to serve the four lots along the county highway, which leads to the exhibit that's in your council packet, showing the improvements coming down to those four lots. This is unique in several items, in that all of the work will be within the county highway, and so this development agreement includes provisions to have the county highway approval of the work that's going to happen. The other thing that makes it unique is that we're working with the county highway now to come up with an alignment that won't disturb the pavement. We're trying to find an alignment either in the ditch off to the side of the road, or maybe even on an easement in the front of the properties to the side. Currently, the letter of credit in the agreement assumes the full pavement restoration, but if we can come up with an alignment that doesn't require the pavement restoration, then we will do an amendment to reduce the letter of credit commensurate. the pavement restoration, then we will do an amendment to reduce the letter of credit commensurate to what the work would be when it happens. Per the ordinance, sidewalk is required on the new lots. It would just be these six because the other lots within that replat already have structures on them. And as Ryan pointed out, uh, before, well, actually, um, before we get to that, we'll say that, uh, we did receive a request from the developer to defer sidewalks. This was part of a larger plat earlier back in the early 70s, I believe it was, uh, mid 70s, where, uh, there were almost 100 lots platted out there, um, that, uh, were constructed without sidewalks. And so these are really infill lots. So the developer has requested deferral of the sidewalks. I've included language at the end of the development agreement that, uh, amends the section on sidewalk to, uh, refer to drawing 2019-05R, which would defer sidewalks until there is a project to construct sidewalks within the Mill Run subdivision, at which time sidewalks will be constructed and specially assessed to the adjacent parcels in accordance with the special assessment policy in effect at the time of construction. And so where that goes, it'd fit right into, uh, this paragraph. It would change the title of the drawing and then the text would come at the end. And what that does, this is what the, um, exhibit would look like where it shows the deferral of the sidewalks. So with that, um, I'll be quiet and entertain questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jensko. Uh, question from Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, Mr. Jensko, I, maybe this piece wasn't, maybe this is the wrong time for this question, but I'm wondering whether or not, uh, the neighbors have any concerns about these lots? Any concerns about sidewalk, not sidewalk? Was there any?
Well, I don't think the neighbors would be concerned about the sidewalks in that the sidewalks would be going in adjacent to the new houses. This wouldn't be forcing sidewalks on the existing houses. As to whether they have concerns about six new lots being tucked in there, I think most of those are rentals out there. I think the developer of these lots owns, I believe, certainly the majority. I'm thinking maybe 80% of the lots out there. And so he's essentially his own neighbor.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Strobel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jensko. Um, just, this is just to clarify that that language is all included. Here, we don't have to move that?
No, it would require action by the council to move that language if you choose to take up their request for deferral. If you don't move it, um, that's essentially saying, no, we don't think it should be deferred. Then sidewalk will go in per the ordinance.
Thank you. I recognize our city manager.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, if, if it's helpful, although, you know, staff is strong proponents of sidewalks in this particular situation, given the lack of sidewalks in the rest of the area, it, it is staff's recommendation that you would, make that deferral. And again, pointing out that the way that deferral is structured, it's such a way that if, at such time, other sidewalks are ordered in that neighborhood, these would automatically have to be built. So they wouldn't have to come back for further consideration. But they would automatically be built at such time as there's a bigger policy discussion about the sidewalks in the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, further questions? From council on the Mill Run development and sidewalks? I don't see any. Thank you again. Then on a motion by, I believe we're going to start from the beginning with Councilmember Strobel and seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Are you okay with, uh, motioning this? If not, we'll go with Councilmember Anderson. Okay, you want to move the, well, we can do-
Or move, you can move it.
Let, let's, let's do them separate. So we're first going to move, uh, the Mill Run number 20, um, on a Councilmember Strobel and seconded by Councilmember Anderson. And then, um, we'll open up the Florida discussion or amendments. Would you like to motion right away?
I, I would move that we defer sidewalks-
Okay.
-on item number 20.
Do we have a second on that? Also by Councilmember Anderson. Further discussion, um, this would be, we'll first vote on the amendment to add in the deferral of sidewalks. Is there any discussion on that particular item? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes, so the, item 20, resolution, um, on this development agreement now includes the language on, to defer the sidewalks. Is there conversation on this, um, item at this time? Mill Run. Seeing no desire for conversation, I will then ask the Madam City Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move to item 21. This is a resolution which would approve a certified survey map with right-of-way dedication for Galloway Street. Mr. Petrie?
Uh, this is a city-owned property on Galloway Street on the corner of Galloway and River Prairie Drive. This certified survey map, uh, creates one outlot and one lot. The outlot would be attained by the city of Eau Claire for a future trail potentially. It also has a retention pond on it. Uh, this CSM does clean up the right-of-way, uh, on a zoomed in. This is about a seven-foot right-of-way that would be dedicated to the public, uh, with the CSM. Uh, the Plan Commission did, uh, recommend approval of the request. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. I actually have a question on this. Just for my clarification, there's the outlot to the south and does that extend around onto the river? Just trying to remember what that looks like.
That is correct, sir. Uh, outlot one extends from the river-
Yeah.
-all the way up to the street-
And around.
-and then down to the railroad tracks to the south, southwest.
That's helpful. Um, thank you. Is there any other questions on this replat? It's not a replat, sorry. It's a, um, certified survey map, uh, and right-of-way dedication. Any other questions on, on this over on Galloway Street? I don't see any. Thank you again. Then on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, the Galloway Street certified survey map right-of-way dedication has been moved. Is there any conversation on this? Um, I actually wanted to say, uh, just a couple of things on this item. I think it's really important and I'm thankful that, uh, we're making sure to dedicate space along the river, um, uh, on this project. I actually voted no when this originally came forward, um, as an, as an excess land parcel because of, um, in my, in my view, that the, the value that this could have between our two communities is potential park space. But I think a good compromise is probably, um, in what we're seeing in front of us today, which is to make sure that we do have trail space along the river and we do maintain a lot of green space along the river and to the south, um, which is excellent. So no matter who lives there, no matter what happens there, um, we're still embracing our, our waterways as we're doing, um, elsewhere in the city. So I'm thankful to see, uh, that in this proposal. Councilmembers have any other questions or thoughts or comments on this? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And item number 21 has passed. We move to item 22. This is regarding fees and licenses. This is a resolution amending the city of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and licenses regarding the keeping of honeybees and the keeping of poultry. Mr. Winsens? Uh, did we discuss this last night? Is there any follow-up questions for Mr. Winsens on this item? Fees and licenses schedule? Don't see any. Then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Zhang, fees and license schedule has been moved. Any discussion? I don't see any discussion. Um, I'd actually like to offer an amendment, um, to our fees and license schedule being proposed. One of the things that has kind of come to my attention is the fact that, uh, especially in the case of poultry keeping, um, when this, uh, item first came forward, there was a, a real wish and a, and a, and a hope that, um, we could do whatever was possible to make sure that it was affordable, um, for as many families as possible. And, uh, and so looking at the fee and license schedule and the fact that, um, to, to begin, uh, to have a coop, to have chickens, it would be $180 to begin with and, um, and following years would be, um, I believe it's a $90 yearly fee, including both the county and the city part of this. That could be, uh, I think, out of range for some people to, to even consider it, um, doable. And so one of the things that I wanted to, to look at and I'm going to be proposing tonight is that the city portion of this, the license for, uh, chicken keeping, uh, for poultry keeping and for, for honeybees is actually a one-time, uh, annual, my apologies, it's a one-time licensing fee. And unless there are substantial or major changes made to the project, um, that there would not be an annual re-up of that license, that the license would continue unless a substantial change is made, um, to the, to the coop or, um, in this case, to, to, um, the hives. And so I have actually an amendment that I'd like to offer, um, at this time. If I could have one put on the screen and the others hand it over. So I'm, uh, then making a motion, hereby offering a motion to amend the resolution, um, to include the following changes. Um, I'll explain them, um, but putting a motion on the table, is there a second? Councilmember Beaton? Um, so essentially, this would say that, uh, there's an initial license fee. Um, and this initial license fee covers the cost of the paperwork and time to do it. Um, but that unless there are substantial changes in, in, including location and/or number of coops, uh, in which case the initial license, um, has changed, then there will be a charge. Um, otherwise, annual license is at, at a $0. Um, and then the same thing would, uh, would accompany the, the beekeeping license. And again, unless you're moving your hives or adding hives, um, that there would, uh, not be an, uh, a relicensing of your, um, of your operation. Questions, comments? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Um, uh, Acting President Worthman, this might be a question for you or maybe staff, but, um, my question is about, um, year, like yearly maintenance of a, of a, of a license. If there's no changes, if, um, kind of how much work goes into that? Um, and if, if this change, so that's one question. I guess I have a second question that's a little unrelated. So if I could get an answer to that first?
Sure. I, I'm not certain who to call. Maybe this would be-
Yeah, thank you.
For, uh, Mr. Winsens, Finance Director.
Um, to answer your question, there are annual notification requirements. So, um, regardless of whether it's an initial license or a renewal license, um, the, the requirements from the city's, um, side, uh, of the licensing process are essentially the same. So we're estimating approximately, uh, one hour of staff time, um, to, uh, generate those notifications, to mail them, to receive them back. And, uh, that fully burdened labor rate is approximately $40. So that's where we came up with the fee, um, and it would be same at, um, initial, um, license as well as, uh, annual renewals.
You have another question?
Sure.
Um, and so if there is, um, some change in the license, um, or, or there's perhaps like a complaint that was, that comes to the city that triggers maybe a, an inspection or something like that, um, how would that, how would that, uh, change that cost of managing that license? And, and, uh, do you know if that would be included in this motion?
Sure. Um, complaints and inspections will actually be handled by the Health Department. So it really doesn't change the city's, um, licensing piece. That would be more on the Health Department, uh, side of things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Acting President Worthman. I really like the idea of making the opportunity to have chickens or, um, honeybees more accessible to everyone. And I guess one comment slash question that I have is whether lowering these fees at this time would serve, best serve that goal or whether reviewing the existing, um, policy to, um, you know, one of the things that we, that I heard a lot of feedback about was to, be a little bit more expansive with things like the different kinds of yard size and everything, those requirements, if that might be another way to get at the same goal. I don't know if you have thoughts about that, um, having, um, spent more time on, on these issues than I have. But that is one concern that constituents have brought up is that the, uh, particularly with regards to chicken keeping, that the yard size requirements, et cetera, are, um, prohibited for a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, I think if I could answer that, Councilmember Anderson, I think that, that's a s- it's true. I think it's sort of a separate policy issue about, um, the safety of this and, and what do we want for setbacks? And I think that's, you know, that's obviously a, a conversation about accessibility. But in terms of fees and what we're faced with today, this is kind of, you know, to me, ha, the fact that we have, we will have an annual inspection by the Health Department and people will be paying for that, $50, means that the safety part of this, uh, and the inspection that someone will actually look at is happening. But the licensing part is somewhat separate. And that's the city side of things. And that's where I think unless there's major changes, we could look at how to make it a little bit more cost-effective. So I, that's probably only partially answering your question, but. Uh, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Where I'm having a lack of clarity here is I, I understand that the city has the licensing and the city-county Health Department has the inspection. So there generates two labor fees. But once that license is enacted, could the city-county Health Department be the person, agency that triggers the licensing question? I mean, do, is, is it required that we send anything out? If there, I'm, that's where I have-
I don't, yeah, I'm not, that's a good question and I'm not certain on that, but maybe we can ask. Is, it would be Mr. Winsens again. I'm going to get a seat for you right up.
You could just shout from the back of the room.
Yeah, when, when I do that, I get scolded, so. My understanding after speaking with, uh, Assistant City Attorney Stromberger at the beginning of the meeting is that there are annual notification requirements that are required, uh, under the ordinance. So, um, we are to affirmatively notify the surrounding property owners, um, about the, um, uh, about the, um, license on an annual basis. So, um, if that, I guess, if that provision were stricken, uh, from the, uh, from the ordinance, then that would reduce our annual workload.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President. Along the same lines, um, there would certainly be a cost for mailing and for reaching out to the people within so many feet each year to, to notify them. And more or less, that would be a cost that we would eat as, as, as a city, without some sort of licensing fee. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. I mean, certainly the, the cost of postage and generating the notifications and mailing, mailing them and then following up generates a certain amount of, of, of work for our staff.
And then a follow-up, uh, in regard to, if there was an objection to then, which would have to come before us, then there would be some time involved-
Yeah, then there would be some-
-based on the notification.
Some additional review both by staff and the city council.
I get one more follow-up? So I, I know it wasn't clear with the bees, but if I recall with, with, uh, the chickens, is a tenant, if they don't own the home and they're a tenant of a home, can they be licensed on that property?
It's the, I think it's the, with permission of the landlord as a tenant, you could.
I know with the bees, I don't know if it was in there in that clear, but I still feel like with, especially in a tenant situation where the turnover could be, you know, on a regular basis, that I think with the continual cost of notification each and every year, I think there's some costs there that I don't know if it's fair that we take on as the city.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Weld? Someone else had their hand up. Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I guess I do perhaps have a question for Mr. Winzen's. As more of an exercise.
Part of my wellness program.
Yeah. I guess it was, I guess I'm not familiar with our, whether we do this type of structure for our fees with any other examples for, maybe for the purpose of affordability, but for really any reason. Do we, do we kind of waive the annual fee for any other activities within the city?
As far as fees and licenses go, not that I'm aware of. We do, you know, as you know, have discounts on transit fares, as well as we do have some provisions for special assessments, as we talked about earlier, based upon income. I guess I, when we start getting into the area of fees and licenses, I would just caution that every one of those requires us to do a certain amount of work as far as income verification and other things. So now you just start increasing the amount of staff time, you know, to issue the license at the same time we're reducing the license costs. But certainly, that's a policy decision for council.
Thank you.
Member Emmanuel?
I guess the part that I'm struggling about is just how do we recoup the costs? And just trying to be, perhaps thinking outside of the box. Aside from mailing this, is there any option? Let's say if somebody signed up for an electronic notification or some other way where it could be automated, and then the individual takes responsibility to communicate electronically versus the staff time to print and put in envelopes and label and all of that work? Is there another way that this could be approached where it comes out as a win-win?
Well, the notifications are going to the surrounding property owners. So, I mean, unless we had the email addresses of the surrounding property owners, which, you know, I'm not sure that we would have another way to communicate with those individuals. You know, certainly using our GIS, we have the ability to, you know, to generate the letters, a form letter fairly easily. But again, still incurring the cost of postage and putting it in the envelope and, you know, just kind of those general handling charges. But I'm just trying to, trying to think if we have those, easy access to those email addresses. And I really can't think of a way, and we actually have some restrictions on how we can use certain pieces of information that's in our custody as far as utility billing records. I'm not sure that we could use those in this manner. There are some privacy protections that are attached to those. So I can't think of a way off the top of my head, but there may be something I'm missing.
Councilmember Emmanuel, follow-up?
Thank you. I guess another way to look at this is just kind of the reality of how many licenses are there currently? And, you know, is this a matter of, okay, $80? Is this $3,000? Do you know how many licenses are currently out there?
Well, we don't have any poultry licenses right now. And I don't know off the top of my head how many beekeeping licenses we have. But we are probably talking about fairly small dollar amounts in total.
I may have one more follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. So if this passes then this evening, then is my understanding this, can you share the date span this would be effective? And when council could revisit this? If this passes and it turns out to be more of a burden than the body expected, when could this be revisited?
Sure. If it was adopted, it would be in effect immediately or upon publication. We review our fee and license schedule on an annual basis, so it would come back before the City Council, I believe at your second meeting in November. And that would go into effect then January 1st of 2020. So they are reviewed on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'm beginning to think in this particular place that after hearing from Mr. Winzen's that the earliest that we could change it up or down would be November, based on any experience. So if we wanted to see what is the demand for poultry licenses, nobody would have a renewal until next year anyway. And we wouldn't be able to evaluate our experience until November. So it seems to me that we're solving a problem that we don't really have yet. So I would think, I really appreciate this amendment because I do agree that the program came forward wanting to provide quality food opportunities for families who might be experiencing low income, certainly wanting to have this experience for their families. And I think we should keep that in mind when we're evaluating in November. But I would think, rather than setting this precedent, that I would rather evaluate based on our experience.
Thank you. Further comments on this amendment? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I just want to speak, no, this is more about the city part, the amendment, but from the Board of Health, which I sit on. And I talked to Lisa, the Director of the Health Department, through email and today in person. And she clarified, she did hear the request to try to make it affordable, the Health Department did, and they did look at ways. And, you know, that's what they came up with, is their annual license from the Health Department will be done by interns, so that just the check that they do annually, rather than a full non-intern person. So that was one way that they tried to keep the costs down. And also, the fees for the Health Department will come up annually as well, which, and the Board of Health did approve the Health Department fees at our last meeting, and they'll come up for review again in a year as well. So I just wanted to add that information out there. There's something else, but now I don't remember, so.
Thank you for that. Further comments? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Given that we're going to be looking at increasing the honeybee fee from $10 to $40 initially, and that, I think that both of these programs really seek to serve people of low income and all people in our community, particularly the Keeping a Poultry program. I'm going to be supporting this motion. I think that, especially given the low dollar amount that we're looking at, this is a time when we can, you know, own that value, that we want to make sure that our lowest income residents have access to these programs that really could put them ahead and give them access to healthy food that is being grown right here in their own backyard. And so, as a value, I'll be supporting. So I really appreciate this motion to amend.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I won't be supporting it today, just same reason I didn't support some of the other fee things. I think our fee structure is not designed to generate revenue, it's just meant to recover our costs. And I just, I guess I won't be supporting it now. I might want to comment on something that Councilmember Beaton said, though I was trying to figure that out, how this is going to really make it easier, better for low-income people. And as I tally up the costs here, I'm coming up with $350. I mean, you can't eat the chickens, and all you can do is eat the eggs. And if I was a low-income person, I think I'd go to the grocery store and buy a dozen eggs. And you can buy a lot of eggs for $350. But, so I don't know that that meets that criteria, but for the fee structure, I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Any other comments? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President, and thank you for your leadership to bring this forth. I still feel really conflicted about this. You know, the dollar amount is really low. I actually don't think there will be a big financial impact this year. And I think the merit of making, enjoying life, and in this case, being closer to your food, not just a being about the food, but the whole experience and holistic living, I think is something we should encourage. I guess I would rather us take perhaps a more holistic look at our entire fee and license schedule as it applies to kind of individual homes. You know, I see this as different than a developer who might have 40 or 50 or 100 units, and this is for one household. So I don't think I'll be able to support it. But I think that, for me, it opens up the conversation for how can we do this in a broader way? And at the end of the day, we're struggling just to make ends meet. And hopefully, that can change over the next couple of years, even if we have to go to a referendum. But I think keeping to this license fee just for the sole cost recovery seems to make most sense to me for right now.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Worthman. And I'm a bit conflicted as well, because I think that, you know, we could always look more comprehensively at our fee and license schedule. And I think we've gone down that path already in our, when we approved it to begin with. So I think, you know, not looking at the entire document, you know, through the same lens that we're talking about tonight, makes me feel like we're maybe not looking at it as comprehensively as we could, since we're only talking about two fees. I also, I mean, the cost of producing food, I think, is sometimes a little surreal to the public and to people that are producing it for themselves. I think there's a certain amount of reality that comes with that. And especially doing it in a city where we, you know, we have to have certain protections and we have certain structures. And I think the grocery store prices sometimes give us a false sense of the cost of food. And in this case, like, it does cost a decent amount of money to be able to start up production and then also carry it forth into the future. So I feel like we do, at this juncture, have time to look at this in the long term. If we, if this does not end up passing, like, we still have time before the fee and license schedule in November, where it would not impact people's decision to start a venture like beekeeping or poultry keeping as much as if we, if they knew we were not looking at it, has a possibility to reduce, find ways to reduce the price. So I guess I'm not really sure I'm going to vote at this point, but I just wanted to share some reservations there because I think that our entire fee and license schedule could be looked at. And we do have some examples of where we've found ways to prioritize, you know, based on income, with the example of transit fares. Or maybe there's a way for us to create some flexibilities for a specific objective, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments? Clerk, please call the roll on this amendment regarding the poultry and honeybee fees.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
No.
Emmanuel?
No.
Gregert?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
And that amendment fails on a six to four vote. Move back to fee and license schedule as proposed? Are there any comments? Further amendments? On the fee and license schedule? I see none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye. And item number 22, our fee and license schedule amendments have passed. Move to item 23. This is a budget amendment. This resolution would amend the 2019 budget by transferring funds from the city equipment rental to miscellaneous contractual services for portable restrooms. Because this agenda, because this item requires a two-thirds majority of vote of the elected members, it would be eight affirmative votes for adoption. This is being introduced this evening by Councilmembers Gregor and myself. And the presentation would be by Mr. Winzen.
Thank you, Acting Council President Worthman, members of the City Council. Just real quickly, this amendment is being offered by Councilmember Gregor and Council, Acting Council President Worthman, and would essentially transfer $20,000 in the 2019 budget from the miscellaneous contractual services line item to, or excuse me, from city equipment rental line item to miscellaneous contractual services, with the intent that those funds be used to fund the servicing of the portable restrooms that are used in the park system. We have 11 portable restrooms that are currently city-owned within the system. And at the present time, without any particular action, there are three of those restrooms that would continue to be serviced. The two at the dog parks would continue to be serviced out of dog park fees. And then we have one at the Chippewa Valley Railroad that would continue to be serviced because we have a contractual obligation to do so. This would, if this amendment is approved, the restrooms at the dog parks would be, funding for the servicing of those would come from the general fund, as it has in the past, as opposed to coming from dog park fees. So that would be a slight change as well. But other than that, I'll certainly let the council members speak to their rationale, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions at this time on this budget amendment? Questions, Councilmember Jean?
Thank you. Just a quick question. So the $20,000 we cover for 2019 or 2020?
2019.
So can I, so the $20,000 we cover every, all the expenses, cover everything for 2019, right, correct?
For 2019, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. My question has to do with kind of the, perhaps the abridged history of how long these porta-potties have been funded in the parks? Like, is this a brand-new initiative for 2019? Has this been ongoing?
It is an ongoing program. I would need to probably ask Mr. Pipinger to speak to how long those portable restrooms have been provided in our system.
Pipinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The porta-potties have been in the parks for several years now. Since we've, certainly with Phoenix Park, Carson Park, we've had them there for some of our winter activities. So they've been there for quite a while. As Mr. Winzen says, that we have 11 of them that we purchase ourselves, that we put out on a seasonal basis. Some in the summertime for some overfill of areas that we may have restrooms that we have seasonally, that we can run water to. But we also have some in those areas because we have special events that require more. So they've been out there for several years. As far as the exact date of those, I would say probably about 20 years.
20 years?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Further questions? I don't see any at this time. Thank you, Mr. Winsins. Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. Then on a motion by myself and Councilmember Gregor, item number 22, 23 has been moved and is open for discussion. Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and I do want to thank staff for helping to put this budget amendment together for our 2019 budget. It's, you know, it obviously goes back to our recent operating budget and the decision that was made to allocate funding toward another area and away from the contractual services budget. So this is in line with, you know, that intent of lowering the funding for contractual services, but it provides direction to staff as to where some of that funding could be taken from differently, or how it could be shifted differently within contractual services. Obviously, there is a need in our community for portable restrooms, and, you know, this is a way for us to be able to make sure that they are available to the public in our parks in 2019. And certainly, staff has done some work to be able to find ways to fund them in the interim here, as we, before we have time to make the decision. So, and certainly, some of our user groups, dog park users, have been generous, you know, with regard to their, you know, interest and encouragement, really, to have dog park fees go toward making sure those restrooms stay, because they're some of the more intense users in the wintertime especially. But I think that this amendment kind of helps clarify, you know, if it passes, that, you know, the City Council feels this is a very important thing that we've decided to do as a city over time, that mostly, I believe, it was staff decisions to date that have gotten us to this part where we have portable restrooms in our parks. And I think they're obviously of great value. You know, and I think in the long run, we want to make more permanent restrooms, and I think we've been on the path of doing that. It's just that we're not there yet. You know, as someone who walks and bikes primarily in this community and takes transit, these restrooms can be important for people that are maybe not traveling by car, where they can easily leave the park or leave the trail facility, or to be able to go to a more permanent restroom at their home or at a business. So that's one reason why, you know, I had hesitancy about supporting the initial amendment that was to take the funding away and ultimately did not support it. But I think that, you know, this is a way that we can kind of come together around, you know, a stronger 2019 budget that really takes into account as much as we can about, you know, the difficult balance we have in our budget. Specifically, the reason why I chose to explore the $20,000 coming from central maintenance is that there is a high likelihood, at least in my estimations, that diesel fuel and gasoline prices will be lower than what was anticipated when the 2019 budget was initially crafted last summer and fall. We're actually looking at gasoline prices just a little over $2 right now, and diesel around $3. But each of those was, well, the gasoline prices were about $1 more, around $3 back when the budget was estimated. And obviously, it's a very difficult thing to estimate, is the cost throughout a whole year and how that fluctuates for gasoline and diesel. But it is something that historically we've overbudgeted and, as we should. So just to give some perspective, there is a page on the memo that explains some of the historical costs, at least going back to 2015. So and as soon as 2016, we spent about $365,000 on diesel and gasoline combined. That was a low point of the last few years. Last year was relatively high compared to other years, where it was $534,000, $535,000. We're budgeting about $600,000 for this year. But I think that, I don't think, I guess, I'm counting on us not needing that amount of money, and we could choose to reallocate $20,000 from that intended purpose to make sure that our portable restrooms are available for the next year. So.
Thank you.
I attempted summarizing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Further comments from council? Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, I just, I thought I'd propose an amendment here to the resolution, if I could.
Sure.
And the reason I'm doing it is that the first-
If you want to state your amendment, and then seek a second, and then speak to it.
Okay, right, okay. So I would remove the first whereas clause that I felt didn't accurately depict why we're here. I would replace it with three whereas clauses. They would start, whereas the 2019 budget presented to the City Council by city staff included $175,000 for contractual services, which included money for porta-potties, and whereas that funding was removed by a budget amendment brought forth by two council members and supported by the majority of the council, whereas the funding from contractual services was then transferred to pay for two unrequested library employees. And then the rest of it could just fit right in there. That would be my amendment.
Is there a second on that? You have a second on that amendment? Last call for a second? I don't hear one? Do you want to speak further? Okay. Any other comments from council at this time on this budget amendment? Councilmember Beaton?
I just wanted to express appreciation for all of the, probably all the comments that we heard about this item from the public. We, this was, you know, clearly a show of how local government works, and when our city can be responsive to the comments and the needs of our community as they are, like, immediately being presented to us. And so I wanted to also, so I wanted to thank everyone who shared their voice on this issue and really showed the City Council, you know, the things that, the services in our city that they really use and the services that they really value. I also wanted to thank the mover and seconder for showing our community how our City Council and our city organization can be responsive to those needs and those values. So I will be supporting this resolution. I think that, you know, this was a tricky situation to make in November in the first place. I know that there was a lot of conflict over, you know, what was more important. And I think I heard in the November meeting that both of these things were really extremely important. And so I'm really glad that we've found a way to do both. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Further comments from council? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President, and thank you also to the mover and seconder of this amendment. I echo what Councilmember Beaton shared about, I'll paraphrase, a real-time responsiveness to citizens that's perhaps sorely needed right now in our country. We've got some pretty big divisions, and here, this is an issue that, interestingly enough, unites everybody, because we all have to go to the bathroom. And so this is something that I think we all care about. And when we address the budget, you know, with contractual services, the 2019 levels are still a bit higher than they were approved for the 2018 levels, which we're able to fund all of the porta-potties for last year, and then the previous budget years funded that. And what I see is that, you know, our staff works with council as a team and works with our community as a team to try to make the best decisions with the resources that the community has. And I trust those intentions are very good in trying to do the right thing. And even in that, of prioritizing the porta-potties hit a nerve in the community, where people from many different backgrounds were saying, "We need the bathrooms back." And so I view this really as a, kind of a customer service opportunity, where even if philosophically I still agree with the budget changes that took place, I absolutely agree with that. I think they were absolutely necessary, and I stand by that. And yet, our community, many members asked us to see if we could just realign, realign these funds to make sure these needs were met. One of my first times that I thought about getting engaged in local government was reading a local magazine's article about the City Council in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And it was the first or second time that the City Council at the time voted down the bathroom in Phoenix Park. And I think the headline of the article was "No Toilet for You." And then had a kind of summary of what happened, and then at the end said, "If you want to do something about it, then you should apply for a vacancy." And so I did, not because I was passionate about potties, but, to me, it's, this is a type of issue that communities are going to deal with. This is not the first time our, this body has dealt with that, and probably won't be the last time. And when I think about a multimillion-dollar budget and then $20,000, it's still a lot of money, and in the grand, I guess, proportion of the entire budget, it's very, very small. And so I think it's worth this extra massaging to get right for our citizens to be responsive, and I will definitely be supporting this. I think it's a great idea for families and for people who use our parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Councilmember Strobel, I'm going to call on Councilmember Christopherson, because it's her first turn.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I would like to support this as well, and coming from this experience of learning to work productively with staff in a time when funding is so tight, that any realignment of values and goals becomes a very laborsome conversation and dance to make sure that essential things happen. And I want to express the appreciation for the way this budget process works. I also felt that moving some money towards support of an at-risk portion of our city was very valuable. Whether or not we can continue that, I think we will only know again with our experience. But I think there's kind of an interesting cultural experience that we're having, that the homeless and the people experiencing low income are not here advocating for that money that is going to assist them and advance them to use our community. But we had immediate response from people who have the privilege of pets and dog parks and wanting those porta-potties. So I think just the level of advocacy, I think, is something we have to be aware of and we have to be grateful for, and then we have to lift up the voice of people that are not able to be here. So I, again, I would say if there's something yet, again, that we could do to make this even better, I would like to see that come in front of council. But I believe this begins to massage some of the budget changes, and I think it makes this more tolerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, I'm still upset about the process that got us here, I guess, but I'm not going to support the amendment. And like fellow councilmembers Weld, Gregor, and Christopherson, I did not support taking the money from contractual services in the first place. I was going to ask those members to consider not supporting it as well. I just heard from one member that I don't think can do that. But I think the funding to continue porta-potties at the dog park has already been approved by those user groups, so that funding will come from their user fees. That's taken care of. I don't think the decision by the majority in this council, when they amended the budget, taking the money from this service and many others, will be helped by creating a domino effect where something that was cut is now deemed necessary by the council. I have a huge concern that we will continue to see budget amendments for items that were deleted that council now finds necessary. This is why budgeting is a serious process, and the last second amendments pushed through by the majority to fund their items is not a good practice. It is highly unusual to amend an adopted budget a month after it was passed, which in my opinion speaks to the decision-making process the first time through. So we already took some maintenance monies in the CIP for a pump at Owen Park to fund a, planning for a park in Prince Valley. Now we're going to take money from the Central Maintenance Fund to cover this decision. And I think if it continues on this path, I think, long-term, I think the consequences will be felt by all. So as a matter of principle, I am not going to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President. I concur with a lot of Councilmember Strobel's concerns were, I as well, as was mentioned, did not support the budget change in November or the proposed cuts to the contractual services, removing the porta-potties and such as was approved. And I struggle today to support this new amendment. I feel the original budget amendment was hastily pushed through with little prep or thought to the consequences.
Point of order.
Councilmember Emanuel?
I'd like to-
I'm recognizing you. What's your point of order?
Thank you so much. I just am concerned about questioning the motives of other people on the body. I would ask that we keep the comments to the merits of what we're voting on in front of us versus commentary on each other as colleagues.
Okay. Does that make sense, Councilmember Weld?
Sure. Actions that were taken, you know, at that November meeting, obviously resulted in some signs that were posted and then raised a lot of concern from our citizens throughout Eau Claire. And because of that, now, you know, we're taking additional action to try and remedy that. My concerns are more about future processes with our budgeting. Number one, taking the time to make sure that we are careful and looking ahead. As a governing body of the city of Eau Claire, you know, we have an important role, and, you know, how we budget our money, how we spend our money is, you know, we're going to be held accountable for that. I think to govern or to budget based on assumptions, or on the idea that money may or may not be, may or may not be there in the future, is not responsible governing. It's not being fiscally responsible to hope that the cost of fuel is going to go down or stay low, or that our use or demand, or use of and demand of fuel is going to stay low, or, you know, to me, in this world today, more than anything, there are no certainties in this world. I mean, certainly with what's going on in Washington and our White House, there, I mean, things are, you know, can change on, you know, on a moment's notice within this country. So to just automatically assume that that money is there, I don't think is being responsible. As councilmembers, you know, we need to govern based on what we have. We need to spend on what we have. And we've been entrusted with that by the residents and constituents of Eau Claire. So I want to see us move in that direction in the future. Again, I did not support the removal of porta-potties, but at the same time, I don't want to see our parks without porta-potties either. That doesn't solve our problem and just creates what I would consider a bigger mess than what I would see as a mess that's our- mess than what I would see as a mess that, that's already been created. Um, I think it's unfortunate that, that we're, that we're having to make this decision now. I think it's unfortunate that we're having to cut money from another community service, um, that is relying on those funds. But at the same time, I, I don't wanna see us without, without bathrooms in our parks, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and thank you to, um, all of my colleagues for having such a wide-ranging discussion on this topic. Indeed, we do live in a world where there are very few certainties. It feels like that, especially now. Uh, one thing that we do have as a certainty is that our shared revenue has been declining and that we face levy limits and a lot of restrictions. When you live in an uncertain world and you have a lot of restrictions, it becomes very easy to make decisions out of a place of fear, to make decisions based upon a desire to hold on to what you have, um, and not take any kind of bold action to grow into the kind of community that you wanna be. But I don't think that you can grow a city from a place of fear. I think that you grow a city from deciding on a vision and being responsive, agile, and flexible as you work toward that larger vision despite whatever kinds of conflicts and challenges come your way. So I think that, um, this is a great example of our government working together to, um, create a city where we are investing not just in our physical infrastructure, but in our people, who, uh, some of whom need it most, and then also listening to the needs of the citizens for basic services such as bathrooms, rearranging things, being creative, flexible, and adaptable to, um, get those needs met. So I'm very pleased to be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Beaton?
You very much. Um, with, with regard to some of the concerns that were made tonight, I, I, I wanted to express appreciation for the concerns. And I think, um, I would, I would definitely share them if they, if we were talking about a larger dollar amount. Um, but I wanted, I want to remind all of us that we're talking about $20,000 and that, um, city staff make administrative decisions with more money at, at risk, right? Um, we saw the city staff make an administration, an administrative decision to spend $75,000 on, um, an armored military vehicle, for example. That's the first thing that comes to mind and that happens all the time. And so, you know, I, uh, I do, I guess I do feel a little concerned, or a little confused why this wasn't made administratively. But I think, you know, I'm happy to make this, this vote to be responsive to our citizens. Um, but to say that we're, you know, going completely out of bounds of what already happens administratively, I think really, uh, is, is an exaggeration. And so, um, you know, I guess I would respond to those concerns by saying that this is, this is our way that we can respond to our, our citizens and our, the people who live here who use this service and are asking for it. Um, I don't think it's, it's too much to, to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. And I just wanted to say a few words. I think since I've been on city council, uh, in the last 10 years, we've probably, probably voted on maybe 40 or 50 different budget amendments. Seems almost quarterly. Most of those are grants, but we've had, uh, others where, um, you know, we've been, we've been asked to, to make amendments to our budget. Um, those are normally requested from staff. But I don't, uh, you know, I think in, in keeping with, um, you know, and I, and I had a chance to, to discuss with the city manager, in keeping with, um, you know, changing this, it was gonna take, uh, council members, uh, moving, uh, an amendment in order, in order to make sure that the porta potties receive funding. I think the, the other piece of this is the fact that, um, that there was, that there was always a disagreement around, um, at the time of the budget about the specifics of the cuts that were being made, uh, and a wish to return to those and a wish to hopefully make those things work out. One of the things I had, I had, again, in discussion with the city manager was, um, the fact that contractual services and, and other budgets sometimes come under budget. And why couldn't we just look at that and say, "Let's make sure that they all stay open and, and come a little less under budget, um, at the end of the year?" Well, the fiscally more responsible thing is to actually identify a place where, uh, you know, where specific cuts should be made in the budget. And that's why this amendment is in front of you, instead of looking at the fact that, you know, we usually carry a $2 to $3 million under budget at the end of the year. So looking at the fact that we've had a lot less snow this year, a lot less snow routes, and that gas prices are down, um, that is a reasonable place, uh, to look for, uh, for potential funding to make sure that these stay open. And then, and then it's a matter of priorities, um, and saying, you know, "How do we prioritize this?" And, and folks have been calling and saying that they would like the, these to stay open. And I think that there is a certain amount of responsiveness to say, "Okay, we're gonna make sure that, um, that we, we do what we can in the budget to, to keep them all open." So I would say not unusual to do budget amendments, um, and taking the more fiscally responsible route out of different options we could have taken.
Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. And just wanted to speak to a few additional, um, justifications, I guess you could say, for this, and maybe they repeat a little bit from other folks. But, um, you know, I do think it is significant that the city owns 11 of these portable restrooms and, and there's in fact also shelters that go along with them that make them a little, blend in a little bit better in a park setting, I guess you could say. So I think that's an investment that we obviously need to, to find a way to honor and like, you know, take advantage of. And essentially, this focus of, of funding is on the servicing of those restrooms. And, um, so from like a fiscally responsible standpoint, I guess it's, it's prudent to, um, use the facilities that we have invested in to purchase in the first place. There's also a few, you know, there was a mention of, uh, of, of a particular portable restroom in Carson Park that we're already contractually obligated to provide. And essentially, we, um, we're now gonna assure that there's funding for that, um, to provide that. So I think that's an important point is that there's kind of unique situations for each restroom that having the funding, um, available allows us to be flexible about how we're, um, actually funding them. And, you know, in the long run, we may ask the, the dog, uh, park users to pay for the, for the restrooms maybe in the year 2020, who knows? But right this year, I think it's, it's right for us to, to make sure we're budgeting the appropriate amount of money to get, get through the year. And we can kinda look more long-term about, uh, portable restroom as, as well as permanent restrooms and what that, what those needs are and what it means to, what it would take from a capital standpoint to keep some of them open year-round as well. I know in some cases, there's been neighborhood associations that have got, got involved in fundraising for that even. And just one final point, I guess regarding, you know, the need for these in the community. I, you know, um, I think the homeless population of our city, like, really, um, struggles sometimes to find, you know, appropriate places to, to go to the bathroom. So just for no other reason, from the lens that we've been, we looked at the original, um, amendments in the operating budget to, to focus on that population, see what we can do to address some of the poverty issues, we, uh, I think the portable restrooms actually fit into that vision, um, for, for what we can do to support everyone in our community. So those are just some additional thoughts on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Seeing no further discussion, Councilmember Emanuel, did you wanna add something to that?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I apologize, I was slow to raise my hand. I might be just saying this for myself, so if this doesn't feel like this fits for you, I, I understand. You know, it feels tense and, you know, that just comes with life sometimes, that we have to, you know, just exist. And yet, I don't want it to get lost in the conversation of how much this community is for each other, how much this city is for the community. And if we look at this entirety of the budget, you could say that 99.96, and then the number keeps going on and on, I don't, I'm not smart enough to know how to pronounce the long number, but it's, we agree on so much. And so I really do see this as fine-tuning and, um, it's not lost on me of how much good work this organization does, how much council doesn't even understand or, um, maybe even appreciate the day-in and day-out work that happens in this organization. And so I thank you. I thank the city manager, uh, who represents, um, the organization that we are a city that's for each other. And in all of this, I'll have to deal with the own, my own frustrations or feelings that I have, but I just wanna say we're for each other. I really do believe that. We have many divided opinions about sidewalks and sidewalk deferrals, and yet we all came around something tonight, pretty easily. So I feel more, um, support for our community and for this, supporting our organization to support the community than I feel, um, any other feelings. And I just wanna put that out there, that I think that's more of the culture that I really see and I believe that we have.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Seeing no further discussion on this item, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye. That item passes. Thank you all for good discussion. We move to our next agenda item, which is our appointments. Um, this resolution would appoint city council representatives to the Renewable Energy Action Plan Steering Committee. Um, Mr. Ned Noel is here this evening to fill us in. Good evening, Mr. Noel.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, before you is a resolution to appoint two city council members to the Renewable Energy Action Plan, or what we're calling the RE-Plan. Uh, this is a lighter issue because it's fully funded by the state, so you don't have to squabble over how to fund this. So, uh, it's been funded and typically what we do, this is an, this will become an element of the comprehensive plan. And so we work with the public, this, the different voices amongst the public to represent their opinions on the planning process. Um, and so we will form a steering committee. And we'll have plan commissioners, we'll have city council members, we'll probably have a member from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee as well, uh, those type of stakeholders, as well as utilities and so on and so forth. So tonight, what we have here is looking for two representatives from the council. Probably about four to six, uh, evening meetings, maybe a Tuesday or Thursday that would not conflict with your council meetings, but, uh, would finish up most likely in September or October. And then approval stage would go before plan commission, the sustainability committee, and then also city council. So you'd see the final, uh, plan. The two representatives would also serve to, um, explain how the process is going, if there's any questions amongst the city council, um, and to field any other questions from the public if need be. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer those. But again, just looking for two council members to be a part of this, uh, steering committee.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Other questions from city council about this agenda item from Mr. Noel? I don't see any. Thank you again. Thank you for all your work on this. Um, then on a motion by, I think we'll go with Councilmember Weld and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this appointments, uh, item has been moved. I think what we'll do is, um, open up. If there's an interest, you can nominate yourself, or if you would like to nominate someone else to the position, we'll be open for either. Councilmember Beaton?
Um, I'm, I'm interested in serving on this committee. I'd like to volunteer.
Okay. There are other, um, council members who are interested in serving, um, on this Renewable Energy Action Plan Steering Committee? We have interest from a second council member. Councilmember Gregor, are you, do you have an interest as well?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'd like to nominate, um, yourself, or, as Acting President, to the steering committee.
Okay. Thank you. Um, other, is there interest from any other member or another member that would like to nominate at this time? Just thinking about my calendar right now. No further nominations from the floor, um, or no further interest from the floor? Then, um, myself and Councilmember Beaton will fill in these, uh, two spaces here on the "Now therefore it be resolved" clause. Is there any further discussion on that? Yeah, Councilmember Beaton?
I could just quickly speak to my interest. And I, uh, I'm extremely excited about this pro, uh, process for the Renewable Energy Action Plan. Um, as we all probably remember, um, I, uh, along with, uh, Acting President Worthman, put forward the resolution to, um, commit, uh, or commit a goal to 100% renewable energy by, uh, 2050. And so I'm really excited to, uh, see this process through. I'm also, um, very interested in helping to facilitate really strong public engagement in, uh, the action planning process. I think that our goal is hefty and ambitious and exciting, and we'll certainly need, um, everybody in the community to help inform that plan, um, along with, you know, plan commission members and city council members and other, other, uh, folks involved with the city. So, um, appreciate the consideration and, um, the opportunity to express how excited I am for this.
Thank you for those words. Are there any further comments or discussion around, um, the appointments my, of myself and Councilmember Beaton to this committee? I don't see any. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye. And that passes. We move then to our next item, which is our ordinances for action. Item number 25 is an ordinance amending chapter 6.14 entitled Keeping of Honeybees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire. Staff is recommending that this item be postponed to February 25th and 26th, 2019. Are there any questions on this item at this, uh, at this time? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Jean, uh, my apologies, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. It's a simple question. When this is postponed, would we anticipate seeing the input from council reflected in the proposed ordinance? Thank you.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. And, and absolutely so. There was a, a lot of input, um, and actually a key, a key member of the community who serves as the, I believe the president of the Eau Claire Beekeeping Association was out of town, uh, for a while. And so, um, there was some difficulty kind of figuring out how to incorporate all of that. And so I think giving a little more time, uh, is gonna be helpful. So, um, do I have, um, a motion then by Councilmember, um, Jean and Councilmember Gregor to postpone this item, um, to the date listed? Yeah? Is that okay, Councilmember Jean? Okay. Then, um, and that, is there any, uh, is there any discussion on this postponement? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye. And that item has been postponed. We move to item number 26. This is regarding zoning. This ordinance would rezone properties located at 708, 718, and 720 South Farwell Street, 316 Emery Street, and 707, 709, and 715 South Barstow Street from CBD to CBDP, and approve a general development plan for apartments with reduced setbacks. Plan commission postponed action on this, um, to its February 4th, 2019 meeting. Therefore, it is recommended that this item be postponed, um, until plan commission has taken action. Are any questions on this, um, item? Seeing none, then on a motion, if, uh, it would be a motion by Councilmember Christopherson and Councilmember Strobel to postpone this item to a later date? Councilmembers, thank you. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item is also postponed. We move to item 27. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 318 Elm Street from I-2 to RM. If you'll recall, this was brought up last evening, and if there's any questions at this time from council, clarifications regarding this rezoning request? See none. Then on a motion by councilmember Anderson, seconded by councilmember Emanuel, item number 27 has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll on item 27, an ordinance to rezone property at 318 Elm.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move, lastly, our ordinances for action is item number 28. This ordinance would rezone property located at west, on the west side of Oxford Avenue, between Maxon Street and Cameron Street, from I-1 to CBDP, and to approve the general development plan for apartments with reduced setbacks. There was a discussion last evening, a question asked of city staff to look into the potential prices of these, and I think our finance director, Mr. Winzens, has some things to answer, help answer that question.
Thank you, Acting Council President Worthman. I believe you all received an email from Tyler Warner, the applicant, with a rent schedule for both Phase 1 as well as Phase 2 of this proposed project. And I believe it was councilmember Emanuel that asked last evening, you know, what are the rents that are being proposed? So, in that email, Mr. Warner indicates that 57 of the residences in Phase 1 will be market rate rents, and that 14 of the residences will have rents set at 70% of the county median income. Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Agency, or WEDA, sets rents at various levels or publishes various tables on an annual basis with different rent levels. The rent levels based upon those incomes are in the top part of this table, which indicates that at the 70% of county median income, the rent for a studio apartment would be $882 a month, for a one-bedroom apartment would be $945 a month, two-bedroom, $1134, and a three-bedroom would be $1310. So, really, what we're talking about at this point is Phase 1 of this project. You can also see then that under the proposed Phase 2 of this project, I would say that there's more mix of different income levels as well as rent levels proposed in Phase 2, but that's really not before us this evening. So, I just wanted to make sure that you had this information and provide a direct answer to the question that was asked this evening, or last evening.
Thank you, Mr. Winzens. Do councilmembers have follow-up questions? I think councilmember Beaton does, Mr. Winzens.
Sorry. Your step's in today. So, I'm still having a little bit of a hard time understanding how this breaks down. We received this this afternoon, so haven't had a lot of time to ask questions about it. So, I'm seeing in what we were sent, that the county median income for Eau Claire County is $15,120 for, it says for a one-person family size. And so, when we say 70% of that, do we mean, like, I'm getting $10,000 something, $10,584 as a yearly income? Is that what that 70% refers to?
No, no. The, well, there are two different sets of tables that are published by HUD. This is just having to do with the rents that are being charged in this particular unit. There's also a set of tables that are published that have to do with what the county median income is for different-sized families. So, you'll have a one-person, you know, two-person, different family size, and what the county median income is. So, what, actually, I believe it's the U.S. Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development that these tables were taken from. What they do is then calculate what an affordable rent would be based upon that income, that a family that was at, say, 50% of the county median income, or 60% of the county median, what would an affordable rent for that family be? And so, these tables are published for pretty much every county, in some cases metropolitan statistical areas throughout the United States, and so, they are, you know, based upon local housing conditions and local economic conditions within those communities. So, that's where these rents then get derived from, is what is determined to be those county median, or incomes within those particular counties, and what would be considered to be affordable. So, again, so when we talk about, in this particular case, when we're talking about affordable units, these are the rent levels that we're talking about for those particular units. Did that help, or is that still confusing?
I think I can help answer your question, councilmember Beaton. If you look at the document, you're looking at the 30% level, but there's further pages that show what the 60% level. It's the Wisconsin Standard Multifamily Tax Subsidy Project Income Limits. Estimate maximum, it goes up to 60% of HUD estimates. I think it's like page, there's no page numbers, but it's further down in the document. And on that, it shows that 60% of the median income in Eau Claire for one person is $30,000. That's 60%. So, 70%, that's...
That's a little bit higher than that. And those, Council Vice President Worthman is exactly correct. At the top of the page, it indicates what percent of the county median income that table is referring to.
Okay, that's helpful. I was just trying to get a sense of, like, if somebody made this much money per year, this would be their rent, and...
So, yeah, you can take that annual amount, divide it by 12, and then you can figure out the percentage based upon that, but I don't recall seeing a table that was at 70% of county median income, but you just have to do some math to get there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winzens. Thank you, councilmember Beaton. Further questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Just for the sake of our collective knowledge, these are just estimates using 2018 data. These prices would likely change depending on 2019 data, 2020 data, and the decision that we're making today is not based off of this. This is just totally bonus, extra information. So, I just wanted to put that out there, although I very much value this. I want to make sure my eyes are set on the parameters in which I am making a decision today.
Right, that's correct. You're making a decision about zoning this evening, but because the question was asked, and the term "affordable" keeps getting used, I wanted to make sure we had a common understanding, at least with this project, what we were talking about.
Thank you, councilmember Emanuel, for that clarification, and I believe our city attorney, Nick, has a comment as well.
I just wanted to further that point that councilmember Emanuel made, and Mr. Winzens. This next part, I'm saying not to put Mr. Warner on the spot, but just to realize that, right, what you have in front of you is zoning action. And to be clear, it was covered in your cover materials, but there is not a negotiated sale yet from the RDA to Mr. Warner, nor are the terms of that sale particularly close. I mean, we've had a few discussions, but, you know, he's offering some information to you. I was trying to see if I was copied on the email to council. I don't think I was. I got a different email today, but, you know, those are, I'm sure, his best estimates, but they're not, you're not binding him to that by this action. It really doesn't deal with that, and at least so far, we haven't discussed specifics about whether those sort of proposals of offering some sort of workforce or more affordable housing is contingent upon his intent, as I understand it, to apply for state WEDA, a form of housing economic assistance that would make the development more affordable and is designed, it's a program that's designed to allow developers to offer more units, those 20% units at more affordable rents. So, I mean, he might want to speak on that today, but presumably, you know, this sort of proposal with reduced rents is contingent upon a successful application, and it may also be contingent, we haven't, again, negotiated that point, on a financial request of the city. So, tax incremental financing or other forms of assistance from the city, that's yet to be defined. So, those things are all in front of us, and right now, it's simply a zoning, that if we can figure out those other issues collaboratively, we'll bring the project together a later date.
That's helpful. Thank you, city attorney Nick. There are further questions or comments, and also, the applicant, Mr. Warner, is here this evening too, if council has a question specifically. Councilmember Bergy?
Thanks. And just to clarify, we're approving or asked to approve the zoning, but also approve the general development plan, too? Or, so it says?
Does.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want to further clarify that, or maybe it's not necessary?
Correct. It's a, you're right. It's a combination of rezoning, and then, in essence, the site plan, or how the proposed structure would lay out on the site, including those reduced setbacks and modifications of the parking requirement, among other changes as proposed in that combined, in essence, site plan and rezoning.
Let's remember Bergy?
This might be a hypothetical question, but, so let's say we approve it, because what you said, Mr. Nick, was that everything is still kind of up in the air. So, in not saying this will happen, but we approve it, and then, can he say, "Oh, just kidding you, I'm not going to do affordable housing," or?
Yeah, I can get an answer.
Sorry. City attorney?
I might have to phone out for talking before I recognize. I tried to say it carefully, but I'll try again. I'm not, and I'm sure you didn't mean to be that flip either, so certainly, I'm not trying to be flip about what Mr. Warner is proposing. You know, this is the type of project that we've talked to him about, that he wants to do. I'm just saying there are things still to come, you know, that are, some of which are out of both of our controls in terms of WEDA funding, so unless he's got some news that he's been granted, at last time we met, it's an intent to apply for, not that it's been received. And I just want to make sure you know that things like, you know, whether the project can really go forward may depend on whether, you know, you're interested in financially supporting it. So, the exact nature of that ask hasn't been defined, but certainly, the issue has been raised by Mr. Warner, and, you know, that, again, you just have to make those decisions, just like you made earlier decisions. You might want to make different policy choices, make things more available, but they come at cost. And at this point, I can't tell you the cost. If that request comes, we'll likely have a discussion on it in closed session, but you'll have to weigh those, the policy preference with the cost it may come with.
Is that helpful, councilmember Bergy?
Yes, thank you.
Further questions or clarifications? Did you have something, councilmember Beaton?
Have we moved this, and are we ready for comments?
I don't believe we have moved this yet. Let's, are there any further questions before we move this item? Then on a motion by, I'll go with councilmember Beaton, and seconded by councilmember Jean, this item has been moved. Do you want to speak to it first, councilmember Beaton?
Yeah, thank you. I'm really excited to see this project move forward, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate Mr. Warner providing this information to us for today's decision. I know that we're just talking about a rezoning, but, you know, I think it's really important as we move forward in our discussions about affordable housing, and we move into a place where our city can make really meaningful decisions on affordable housing, that we have these discussions really early. Because we have made decisions, kind of early decisions, that have prohibited us from doing things at a later time, and so, I think, I really hope that we get to a point where affordable housing and addressing how we can create a city that is a little bit more easy to live in for everybody is baked into every decision that we make, even the zoning issues, and we continue to have these discussions early. So, I really, I do appreciate the fact that these numbers that we've been given are estimates, they're not binding anybody to anything, but I really, really appreciate having them in front of us now rather than later. All that said, I guess I just wanted to reiterate my excitement for this project, and really hope to see more things like this come through, so...
Thank you, councilmember Beaton. Other comments from council on this rezoning? Councilmember Gragger?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and just wanted to speak to some of, you know, obviously, on plan commission, I got to review this, and some of the discussion was around the, I guess, the parking requirement and the setbacks being, you know, us being flexible on that, I think is an important part of how this is even possible, even just, not necessarily just from the affordability standpoint, but just from projects in general being viable in our community that have this level of density, or that have this level of care, I think, toward the history of a neighborhood, or toward the fabric of our So, I definitely want to show my support here as well for these reasonable, you know, flexibilities that we're giving, both on parking as well as setbacks. I do certainly have concerns about our parking requirement and how it kind of sets the tone to the point where maybe projects like this do not come to us as often as they could have over the years because of the relatively onerous parking requirements, and potentially, to a degree, setback requirements as well. We heard last night that the developer is able to include a whole another set of, a whole other row of parking as a result of the setbacks, but the parking itself is obviously a significant cost to this development regardless, and the more we can find ways to, maybe as a blanket policy in our ordinance to not require so much parking in the first place, the more we can look at that, I think, the better. But in this particular case, I think it's a great example where we're showing where we're able to accommodate the needs in our community from affordable housing standpoint, and really, the needs of the developer, so just wanted to call that out a bit.
Do we have further comments on this rezone? Item number 28. Councilmember Strobel?
I just want to briefly say, I know Mr. Warner was not here last night, but I know that a lot of members expressed appreciation for him coming back to the city of Eau Claire with a development like this, and I think it's important, it's the second, I think it's the second development in the Cannery District, and it looks to be in a pretty nice spot, so I think I'd like to express my appreciation as well, and I, you know, wish him luck with his funding and the continued negotiations.
Thank you for those words, councilmember Strobel. And further, councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Is Mr. Warner here? Is that you? I was wondering if we could, we, there was some interest in, last night, in hearing about what inspired Mr. Warner to come back and do this project, and I was wondering if we could give him some time to talk.
Sure, that's, that would be great. Mr. Warner? Good evening. Do you want to just kind of restate the question, or did you?
No, I got it, yeah. Thank you, everyone on council. So, for the past like 10 years, I've been doing work in Green Bay, Madison, Milwaukee, and developed over 1,500 units of apartments with a developer in Madison. Coming back and doing something like this is kind of like a feel-good thing for us. Obviously, we're going to ask the city for some financing. Whether, how much that is, we don't know. We're working with WEDA right now on Phase 1, which is going to be like a long-term 25 to 35-year loan from WEDA, because we're providing affordable housing in Phase 1. housing in phase one. We looked at a site back in July and August, right across the street from this site, and that option was given to a different developer, and we kind of got, there's stuff buried in some of the filing that we didn't really understand. So we worked on that for like three months, so we were unable to apply for the four percent and nine percent rounds this last year, but we're going to go back towards the end of this year and apply for phase two, now that we're going to get rezoning approved, and hopefully some buy-in from the local government here, and then we'll get the state of Wisconsin to come in with some tax credit dollars as well.
Thank you. Thank you for those additions as well. Yeah, Councilmember Jeong?
Thank you for coming up there. Just a big question, I wasn't here yesterday, but, so this is a new commercial duplex building, or this is a remodeling one that they're talking about? I wasn't sure.
Right, so this is a site right on Oxford. What's going to happen is we're going to be demoing, once we get to the point of partnering with the city and buying the land, we're going to demo the two existing structures on the site that the RDA currently owns and are leasing out to individuals. The idea here is to demo that during the phase-one construction of the one hundred and fourteen apartment units. Phase one is going to be seventy-one apartment units, three stories with underground parking, and to best utilize that first kind of site going into Oxford, going into the Cannery District to the north, we're kind of like, yeah, we can get the site map up here. Right, so this is phase one right here, that's going to be seventy-one units. This is going to be phase two, and that's going to be forty-three to forty-five units of apartments. We're also looking at maybe trying to design something in between QuickTrip and phase two, that would be kind of like a pedestrian-friendly area going into the Cannery Trail right here. We might not be naming it Cannery Trails because it's not right on the trail, but we're going to have the naming of it be something else. But it's going to be brand-new apartments. The elevations right now look like this. Three stories, we might have a little pitch in the roof. Again, this is kind of conceptual, but what you see right here is going to be pretty much what it's going to look like. Some of the exterior siding is going to be potentially some polycarbonate fiberglass-type stuff, where you can kind of see, you can, there's light that comes in in certain degrees inside of the building. That's a good material that we were looking into using for the outside, but, does that answer your question?
Yes. Can I? I wasn't sure exactly what the location is. I know it's right on the corner of Ballenger and Madison, is it what it is?
Right, so the original site was actually right in between Family Video and the Brewing Project. This site is directly across the street from that, right in between the Children's Museum and QuickTrip. It's right on the corner of Oxford and Mason, or Maxon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jeong. Further question from Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President, Mr. Tyler, I know, or Mr. Warner, I know that we talked about it, the Plan Commission meeting, and I know the question came up last night too, but maybe if you could just recap a timeline, and then working with the city and the construction, reconstruction of Oxford Avenue, and how the next two years might look for you in phase one, and...
Yeah, so the timing here is all depending on, obviously, getting approval, getting rezoning. Now that we have rezoning, I can go back to the banks that I originally went to back in fall of this last year. So we just keep on getting the ball rolling. It's not going to be like a normal apartment building where I would go out and raise four to six million and then get a bank loan for sixty to seventy-five percent of loan value. There's going to be private money invested in this thing, there's going to be WIDA money invested, hopefully buying from the local government. There's going to be a bridge loan involved that different pieces of capital are going to come and repay that. Phase two is going to be a little bit more complex on that, which is why we're going to do phase one first, which is going to be a mini-perm construction loan, about one and a half to two million dollars from private mentors and partners that I have within the company, within the board or whatever. And then a couple of other sources of capital stack as well. But the plan here is to begin construction this spring and then open up next spring, or at the beginning of summer and open up next summer, and then start right at the beginning of spring of 2021 on phase two.
Thank you.
Or sorry, 2020, and then opening up 2021.
Thank you. Further questions, Councilmember Bergy?
Thanks, and thank you, Mr. Warner, for coming down. Hope Canada was nice.
Yeah, I was stuck in an airport for eleven hours in Ottawa yesterday, so that was not fun. But I did get a lot of work done, and I hope these guys over here did a good job.
Yes, it was very, yes, they did. Just with your email you sent today, thank you for that, too. I just want to clarify, we do not foresee reaching the maximum rental limits provided in the schedules, however. Does that mean that you, you don't have, like, those rents that were listed up there that you want, you don't see? Or may I just explain what that means, please?
Yeah, so let me bring this back up. Okay, so for instance, the seventy percent rental limits that you see right there, going all the way down to thirty percent, we are actually going to be paying for a lot of the utility bills for phase two, because that's how the WIDA tax credits work. So if we're going to get the nine percent tax credits, those are the maximum rents that we can charge, but we still have to reimburse, we just have to pay for their utilities. Any of the non-market rate units, we have to pay for their utilities. That's the maximum, like, case right there scenario. So it's actually going to be lower than that.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions? Councilmember Gregor?
And President Worthman?
And actually, Councilmember Gregor, if I could just let you know and other council members know that we're going to try and make it out of here in the next fifteen minutes because of the county board.
Just wanted to thank you, Mr. Warner, and also I had a question for you. Yes, you know, especially in light of, you mentioned the utilities, it kind of came to mind the experience that you have with green building or energy efficiency, and I'm not sure if you have LEED-certified buildings that you've done in the past, but I'd love to hear what you've done and what you're planning to do, I guess, with a project in Eau Claire.
Yeah, so a couple of things that we're going to be working on is, once the building's up, then we can actually apply for some more federal credits in regards to putting solar panels on the roof. So at the end of my, the last company that I started, that was kind of one of the main things I did, was figure out how we can put on each one of our roofs solar panels. So that's the main thing that I looked at doing, which is why you kind of see a flat roof here. It's not completely flat, it's going to have like a decent pitch on it, not like regular, but like, it's going to have a little bit of an incline, so we can put, cover the whole phase-one and phase-two buildings with solar panels, which should be able to allow us to recapture a lot of the expenses associated with heating the community room, fitness center, hallways, and stuff like that.
Awesome.
So that's one thing that we look at doing. You know, obviously, like, low VOC paints, we do, you know, the bulbs that don't last two years, the bulbs that, the LED bulbs that last like ten to fifteen years. It's a little bit costly upfront, but we're also able to sit down with our CPAs in-house and get a bunch of credits for that as well, because we're using all these materials that last fifteen to twenty years. And then hardy plank, you know, that stuff lasts fifty to a hundred years. In some areas of the building, we'll have triple-pane windows. And then there's like five or six other things that we're going to be including on the green and sustainable initiatives of the building. So it's kind of standard practice for us, but...
Thank you.
Tremendous, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Warner at this time? I don't see any. Thank you, and thank you for answering all of them as well.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Thanks for being patient with us, and I'll schedule my meetings, I'll come back two days early instead of daily, the weather is kind of crazy up north, so, all right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Then on a, have we already, we haven't motioned this yet? We have, I think it was Councilmember Beaton and Jeong. Then are there further comments or questions or motions that council would like to make before we vote on this item, rezoning? Any general comments? Okay, I don't see any at this time then. Clerk, please call the roll on the rezoning, item number twenty-eight.
Councilmember Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And item number twenty-eight passes. We move then to our ordinances for introduction. Item number twenty-nine is, ordinance amending the zoning code of our city of Eau Claire by amending the general development plan for sign standards in the Gateway Northwest Industrial Park. Is there a desire at this time by city council to move, to suspend the rules and move this item for action? Any desire? Seeing none, we will move then to item number thirty. This is an ordinance amending the zoning code of Eau Claire by amending the general development plan for sign standards for Gateway West, again, Gateway West Industrial Park. Is there any wish or desire by city council to suspend the rules and move item number thirty at this time? See no such desire. We will then move to our last ordinance for introduction, which is a special assessment. This item, ordinance number thirty-one on our agenda, is amending chapter 3.16 entitled "Special Assessments," the code of ordinances of the city of Eau Claire, and the special assessment policy to amend sidewalk repair assessments to be consistent with current residential corner lot policies. Is there any desire by city council to move this item, suspend the rules, and take this up? Seeing none, we then go on to our announcements by city manager and city council. City manager?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Just two quick announcements. One is a reminder that a week from Wednesday is the Chippewa Valley Rally, and if you haven't signed up for that or have an opportunity to go, we would love to see as much participation as we can have on that. And then on February second, you have two options for your time that evening. One is to participate in the Chippewa Valley Joint Cities Meeting, which is going to be up in Bloomer this quarter. And then it's also the evening for the At-Large Candidate Forum that's being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. So plenty of activity on the evening of February seventh. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those, city manager Peters. Are there any announcements from city council this evening? Seeing none, on a motion by Councilmember Gregor and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, without objection, this meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.